Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting of the New Hanover County Schools' regular meeting to order. It is 5:30. If everyone at the Board of Ed Center could please stand for the invocation or moment of reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which is named, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Lisa Eastup.
Here.
David Wortman.
Here.
Stephanie Adams.
Here.
Nelson Boyer.
Here.
Judy Justice. Judy Justice.
Here.
Jeanette Nichols.
Here.
And Bill Ravanbarck.
Here.
All right, we have all Board members present. Moving on to item number two, it is my distinct honor to introduce the Honorable Judge Julius Corpening, who will be administering the oath of office to our new Superintendent, Dr. Charles Faust.
All right, Dr. Faust, if you'll raise your right hand. I'm going to ask you to listen carefully to this oath, and if you agree to abide by it, I'll ask you to answer appropriately at the end. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as Superintendent of the New Hanover County Schools this the first day of September 2020. If you agree, please say "I will."
I will.
Thank you, and welcome to Wilmington, North Carolina.
Thank you.
So I'll invite you to sign each copy for this. Madam Chair, it's official.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you, Judge Corpening.
Thank you, Judge Corpening, very much, and thank you for everything you do for our school system.
Good to see you, everybody.
Good to see you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Well, welcome, officially. Moving on to item number three, closed session, and we will be hearing from Dr. Faust later when it is time for the Superintendent's report. Moving on to item number three, I would like to ask for a motion pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes for a closed session, North Carolina General Statutes 143-31811A1, A3, and A6, to consult with the Board's Attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege, including receiving advice in the matter of State versus Abraham Malkor, 18 CRS 059504, to consider personnel matters and to maintain the confidentiality of personnel records under North Carolina General Statutes 143, sorry, excuse me, 115C-319 and 321, and of student records rendered confidential under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20USC 1232G. Is there a motion?
Move for closed session pursuant to the statutes. Mr. Boyer.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer.
I'm Bill Ravanbarck.
Thank you, Mr. Ravanbarck. There's a motion in a second. Ms. Bowie?
Lisa Eastup.
Aye.
David Wortman.
Aye.
Stephanie Adams.
Aye.
Nelson Boyer.
Aye.
Judy Justice.
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols.
Aye.
And Bill Ravanbarck.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, nothing. We will return no later than 6:30. Thank you. All right, we are back in open session. We are on item number four, approval of the agenda. We do have one addition under new business, item I, election of new Board Chair. So if you all could please add that to your agenda. Are there any other changes or additions or deletions?
Why is this being made?
Because I am stepping down as Board Chair. So if there are no other changes, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as amended. Mr. Boyer.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. Is there a second?
I second the motion. Jeanette Nichols.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. There's a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I would have want a little discussion. I think the policies that we're going to talk about today actually contemplate that, do they not?
The election of the offices?
Yes.
I think so. I can't remember all of them. I've seen so many.
Well, there's a bunch of them, but I think that...
It does. It does. I can speak to that. It says that elections will take place at the will of the Board and each December at the December meeting.
I think it also says, Mr. Boyer, I was referring to the resignation of the Chairman or Vice Chair, but I think it says, if I remember correctly, that vote for a new Chair or Vice Chair will take place at the next meeting, next regularly scheduled meeting. Is that not correct?
I believe the language allows for it to take place as early as possible.
I think, actually, I think the language that, if I remember correctly, because I read it today, I'm pretty sure that was the actual language that I quoted. Ms. Davis?
So, you know what? We could have that discussion during that item. I think that would probably be...
That's fine. Yeah, I just wanted, I didn't know...
So let's approve the agenda first, and then we'll get to that.
Okay.
So there's a motion in a second?
I'm Bill Ravanbarck.
Okay. So, Ms. Bowie?
Lisa Eastup.
Aye.
David Wortman.
Aye.
Stephanie Adams.
Aye.
Nelson Boyer.
Aye.
Judy Justice.
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols.
Aye.
And Bill Ravanbarck.
Aye.
All right, motion passes seven, nothing. We are on approval of the minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes for July 7, 2020.
Can we take them together as a group?
We can. Are there any objections to that? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for July 7, 2020, the special meeting minutes for July 31, 2020, and the special meeting minutes for July 7, 2020?
Move for approval. Mr. Boyer.
There's a motion, there's a...
I second the motion. Jeanette Nichols.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Eastup.
Aye.
Mr. Wortman.
Aye.
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Ms. Justice.
Aye.
Ms. Nichols.
Aye.
And Mr. Ravanbarck.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, nothing. Thank you. Item six, recognition of achievement. Item A, recognitions. Ms. Gibson?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board and Dr. Faust. The following organizations, schools, teachers, and students, we feel honored to recognize tonight, community partner Nurish NC, school showcase video presenter Carolina Beach Elementary School. At the request of our schools, we will be pausing the school showcase video program for the month of October. We plan to restart as soon as possible when students return to the school buildings. Thank you.
Greetings, members of the Board. I'm Steve McCrossan, Executive Director of Nurish NC, and I'm joined by Caitlin Maddox, our Program Director. We want to thank you for the opportunity to share information about the partnership between New Hanover County Schools and Nurish NC, and in particular, how we work together to make sure every child in our community is well-fed. The mission at Nurish NC is to provide nutritious food to hungry and food insecure children. We want to put good food in those kids' bellies so they can do well in the classroom. Let me tell you some more about Nurish NC. We are a small but mighty nonprofit that was founded in 2008 when the Backpack Program began feeding just 15 children from Carolina Beach Elementary School over the weekend when school lunch wasn't available. Fast forward till today, Nurish NC's Backpack Program is in 53 schools, feeding nearly 1,700 children. We are governed by a highly engaged Board of Directors and really rely on volunteers who put in thousands of hours a year to make sure kids are well-fed. That includes senior leadership from New Hanover County Schools, when they join us every year to pack backpacks for their kids. It also includes teachers, administrative staff, and social workers from the schools who join us, and we're fortunate enough to have your students come in as well, like these ones from Mosley. The majority of our funding is from individuals, businesses, and the faith-based community, and we're also fortunate enough to have some funding from New Hanover County. All of our services are free for the children and families that we serve.
So as Steve mentioned, we've grown to now serve 53 schools, but each school can range from anywhere from one child to 80 per school. Of course, that depends on the needs of the student population. So we, of course, try to make this as easy for our families and our social workers with low-barrier enrollments, and the program is tailored to the children depending on their age. So all a parent guardian needs to do is sign a waiver, and they'll receive the high-quality product that we recognize it makes it easier to build strong children than to repair broken adults. So as mentioned, the program is tailored depending on the child's age, so we have two different service models. For our K through 5th graders, they get a bag in their backpack every weekend, which is meant to feed them over the weekends. There's nothing unintentional about the bag that they receive. The food is dietitian-reviewed, kid-friendly, Pop-Tops when able. The food is delivered to the school in a black bag with no branding and placed in the child's backpack when they're out of class. Those meals are often delivered to the schools by volunteers and distributed by the school personnel. Little shout-out here to Ms. Latham or Ms. Whitfield with her cart bringing around her bags to her kids, and this is what they drew when we asked them to tell us how their bags made them feel. When the kids transition to middle school and high school, they come and they pick up a once-a-month monthly box. That box is designed to feed them during those same four weekends when they're outside of school, but in addition, we can load them up with fresh fruits and veggies, frozen proteins, bread, eggs, and more. Those are picked up at the Nurish NC warehouse, but we also offer deliveries, and we see lots of support from our school social workers and school personnel coming to help deliver those boxes to the kids. Here we see Ms. Brinson rocking it out with her car full of food for her kids. But in addition to feeding kids on weekends, we always are sure to take care of them on holidays and school breaks as well. Here you see an example of our Take 'Em Bake Thanksgiving Dinner, where we provide every family everything they need, from the produce, the 12-pound frozen turkey, the dry goods, even the pan itself, to bring everything home and cook Thanksgiving dinner at home around their own dinner table. Of course, we always feed them three meals a day when they're out of school as well. Here you can see an example of a school break like spring break. These boxes can be picked up at Nurish NC, delivered to the homes of our students, or to the schools themselves.
But Nurish NC also responds to any disaster that forces children out of school. From Florence to COVID-19, we are committed to making sure our kids have access to healthy food, no matter what the situation. Governor Cooper closed the schools on March 14, and Nurish NC opened our No Contact Drive-Thru to safely distribute food just three days later. At this drive-thru, each child receives two weeks of groceries with fresh produce, bread, meat, eggs, and we offer that service every two weeks to make sure they are always fed when they're not in school and don't have access to free or reduced lunch. What you see here again is an example of our partnership in action with school social workers coming and filling their cars up full of food and delivering them right to their kids' homes. We also include extras at this drive-thru, like masks, board games, and books, voting registration information, anything else we can do to tie our kids into resources in this community. But we also serve in the community at large. Here we are at El Cuervo Church. We work with the Latino Alliance, Kids Making It, and a host of other agencies to deliver food right into the communities where our children need it most. And let me show you the drive-thru in action. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Steve McCrossan, Executive Director of Nurish NC. Throughout COVID, over the course of the summer and beyond, Nurish NC is dedicated to feeding our kids anywhere and everywhere they need us. Today, I'm at our No Contact Drive-Thru. We're going to fill lots of kids' bellies and put big smiles on their faces and a whole lot more. Let me show you. Everybody in the family starts out with a hot grilled cheese sandwich from our friends at Wrightsville Beach Brewery today.
And next, we greet each family and then send them up to where the magic happens. Hey, how you doing today?
Doing great. How are you?
Ah, thanks.
Every child receives two bags stuffed with kids' favorites that are easy to cook and yummy to eat. Every kid gets a fresh box of produce. Every kid gets a loaf of bread and a pot pie for the whole family.
And we're excited that with this distribution, thanks to a special donor, we're able to give every child a board game or sporting equipment. So in addition to feeding summer hunger, we're also feeding summer boredom.
And none of this is possible without your...
But we do more than just the Backpack Program. For example, our Farmer's Mark Kids, where kids can shop for fresh produce. We bring these fresh fruit and vegetable stands to CEP schools or Community Eligibility provision, and they are able to shop with Nurish bucks for all the fresh fruits and veggies that they would like. Of course, we also give them a healthy recipe for them to try all of the new things in their bag. We can also provide schools with emergency pantries, anything from a desk drawer to a full closet. These can be various snack items, full meals, and anything for emergency needs. Here we see Dr. Fink bringing in snack packs for us.
As part of our vision to be anywhere and everywhere, food insecure children need us, Nurish NC launched our Food Pharmacy Program. Children are screened for hunger and food insecurity right inside of their doctor's office. If they screen positive for food insecurity, that doctor then gives them a box of food provided by Nurish NC, as well as a prescription for fresh food they pick up at the Nurish NC warehouse. Nurish NC's Toddler Tummies Program is also an extension of our vision to be anywhere and everywhere. This program feeds one to four-year-olds right in their homes. Nurish NC sends food through our partner agencies right into the living rooms of children who are often struggling with high ACE scores, toxic stress, poverty, and homelessness.
Every year, we ask our kids, our parents, and our social workers how we're doing, and this is what they tell us. We get text messages, wonderful drawings from our kids, and amazing feedback from our parents. One parent that came through our drive-thru described the fact that they had been so tight, they had been buying the bare minimum, and they all grabbed a banana as if it was Christmas Day.
And once again, we are so thankful for our partnership and for the people who make it happen, the teachers, the social workers, the principals. We can't do it without you. If you haven't come in for a tour or to pack some food bags with us, please stop by or feel free to contact Caitlin or I with feedback or just to chat. Thank you.
Y'all need to let us know if this is a Kleenex alert from now on.
Welcome to Carolina Beach Elementary School. There are a lot of logistics about the building itself that we take a great deal of pride in. Our school was built in 1938, so the history of this building is a huge part of our culture. We also get a lot of use out of our courtyard area, which includes an outdoor classroom, a little library, our vegetable garden maintained by our Green Arts Club, and our breathing group path that is used to accommodate the sensory and aesthetic needs of our students. And of course, our proximity to the issue itself is just an added bonus. With that said, we all learned last spring that there is a lot more to a school through the walls that hold it up. So it is my honor to share with you the core values that anchor everything we do at Carolina Beach Elementary.
At Carolina Beach Elementary School, we value ourselves, our environment, our relationships, our learning, and our future.
My name is Emily, and I value myself. Sea Stars value ourselves. Sea Stars understand the value of taking care of themselves, whether through physical care such as yoga, or understanding the connections of the human body, emotion, and mind.
My name is Delaney, and I value the environment. Sea Stars know that taking care of the environment enriches all involved, and that the environment is not just the physical places around them, but the emotional and physical support of those within that environment.
My name is Colton.
And my name is Craven.
And we value our relationships.
Sea Stars value their relationships with others.
We value our family, friends, classmates, teachers, and community members, to name just a few.
My name is Cora, and I value my learning. Sea Stars value their learning in many ways, including problem-solving, collaboration, creativity, analysis, explanations, and making connections.
My name is Beckett, and I value my future. Sea Stars value their future by coordinating with community members, participating in clubs and organizations, supporting fundraisers, engaging with volunteers, and taking ownership of their education.
We are the Carolina Beach Elementary School Sea Stars, and the driving force behind our core values comes from one of our all-time favorite stories about a child who aspires to save a beach full of starfish that have washed ashore after a storm.
The old man said, "There are more starfish than you can ever save. You cannot make a difference." The child bent down to pick up another and threw it into the ocean with a smile and replied, "I can make a difference to this one."
Sea Star students, teachers, and families model our five core values as we aspire to make a five-star difference in all that we do at Carolina Beach Elementary.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Those were really wonderful, both of them. All right, we are on item seven, call to the audience. We have, looks like, six members of the community that have signed up. First is, are these in order, Ms. Bowie? Okay. All right, if you want to announce them, then?
Our first call is from Barbara Anderson.
Good evening. This is Barbara Anderson, President of the New Hanover County Association of Retired Educators and retired educators. Thank you, Board members. I am talking tonight about the possibility of the decision that might change classes from remote Plan C to face-to-face Plan B. I'm asking you to reconsider Plan B as not an option at this time. In the Code of Ethics for North Carolina Educators, the number-one priority is keeping students' health and safety is paramount, within the educator's control. There is no control for educators at this time with preventing any form of infection. If Plan C isn't working, then ask exactly why it's not working and fix the parts that aren't working instead of pushing parents into a decision of either virtual academy or face-to-face. That's not fair, and it's not safe, and it's a risky decision. Educators are supposed to protect their students, not infect them, and by pushing them into Plan B, you're putting educators at all school levels into a physical and emotional risky situation and a situation in which they have no control over to protect their students. There is no guarantee, except that the data does show that we are all safer at home. Please reconsider and stay on Plan C until our numbers across the state do not show increased infections. We already had several outbreaks at UMCW. It's just not a wise decision to make at this time. several outbreaks at UMCW. It's just not a wise decision to make at this time. Fix the problems, keep our students safe in their homes. Thank you.
Our second call will be from Sandy Isles.
Hi, my name is Sandy Isles, and I'm speaking tonight to give praise to the teachers and staff at Mary C. Williams and Murray Middle School. I know that there was great concern about remote learning this fall, but I can say my girls' teachers and school administrators have done a fantastic job. My girls are engaged and are learning new content. I have watched my daughter's third-grade teacher engage a class of 20 enthusiastic eight-year-olds, calling on them to participate. She has connected with my daughter and is actively building a relationship with her. My eight-year-old is learning to advocate for herself, and her first instinct is to reach out to her teacher via Google when she needs help despite me being right here. My oldest has settled into her school day with ease. She is engaged and connected with her peers. She has seven teachers total, and each teacher has provided consistency with their lessons. She is taking ownership of our education and learning to be flexible and adaptable, which are life skills needed to be productive and successful. This is a crazy time, and because of these teachers' hard work, creativity, and dedication, my girls are doing really well. I particularly want Mr. Reivenberg, Mr. Wartman, and Ms. Nichols to know that remote learning for my family has been successful and productive. I know all three of you had major concerns based on your previous comments. My girls are doing great, are engaged, and are learning. The teachers are doing everything they need to do for my kids to be successful. I hope, as the district discusses transitioning to Plan B, that they will continue the remote learning option for families. I have researched the virtual academy and edgenuity, and I know this format is not appropriate for my children. The primary reasons being that this curriculum does not provide appropriate academic differentiation, is primarily independent and isolated from their peers, and that it is not teacher-taught. I have the expectation that my children will be taught by their teachers, not learning through a computer platform facilitated by teachers. That distinction of teaching versus facilitated body is very important. No parent should have to make the decision between their child's health and their education. I know edgenuity will not provide my children with the quality, well-rounded education they need to thrive, much less the disruption it will cause if they are removed from their current learning environment. We have five weeks before the end of the grading period. At this time, I don't know if we will feel comfortable sending our children back into the school building because there are too many unanswered questions. I am begging the district and board to consider the stress families and teachers are facing and give us reasonable options during this time. We have to protect our public school enrollment, and if the district is unwilling to work with families, we will see our enrollment numbers continue to decline. That could have devastating effects for years to come. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Our third caller tonight is Reverend Dante Murphy.
That's higher than I think.
My name is Reverend Dante Murphy, representing the Southern Coalition for Equal Protections Under the Law, a movement that seeks to balance the powers between the government and the people and to hold public officials accountable for their actions. Part of me wishes to congratulate and wish Dr. Faust the best during his tenure as Superintendent of New Hanover County Schools. To do so would be hypocritical. First of all, the New Hanover County School's child sexual abuse and discrimination scandal, the cover-ups that followed, and additional attacks on community members who fought for transparency has left a trail of blood that needs to be cleaned up. Sooner rather than later. Attorneys hired by the New Hanover County School Board are being paid an enormous amount of money to manipulate the judicial system, deny compensation to victims of child sexual abuse and discrimination, and further obstruct and cover up the truth of what went wrong for so long within the system. Most degrading is the effort to protect the reputation of school staff, top administrators, and former attorneys who engage in mafia-style leadership with no regard to the innocent lives that continue to be devastated. Secondly, we must understand the significance of one particular lawsuit, Murphy versus attorney Wayne Bullard and the New Hanover County School Board of Education. This lawsuit was filed to hold the school board and its former attorney accountable for violating its own policy, who refrain from personal attacks during school board meetings, infringement on the right to free speech, and causing harm to citizens in the process. It is our hope the public will join us in the fight to assure that people feel free to speak candidly about the issues that ensure child safety. Lastly, citizens must join efforts to remove District Attorney Ben David from office for his shameful failure to perform his duty to initially charge Nicholas Oakes for sending sexually illicit text messages to a 12-year-old student. That failure enabled the continued abuse of that same child. In conclusion, it is time for New Hanover County to pay for its sins and allow the system a breath of fresh air. Resolve all pending lawsuits now.
Our next caller is Amanda White.
Members of the board and Dr. Faust, my name is Amanda White, and I represent many of our teachers and educational support professionals as the President of the New Hanover County Chapter of NTAE. We first want to welcome Dr. Faust to New Hanover County. We are excited to hear that you want to change New Hanover County schools for the better, while also bringing us into the 21st century in terms of technology and inclusiveness. Our teachers and students have done an amazing job adjusting to teaching and learning online through various learning management systems. We know parents are doing their best, and we thank them for communicating with us so we can meet the needs of our students and teachers. Teachers are concerned that if we move too quickly to Plan B, we will leave our students behind. The intended policy presented to teachers stated that students would be most absent. They did not attend class in person, even if they completed all of the work assigned to them through their LMS, like their peers learning from home that week. We believe that students who complete their work and choose to keep themselves safe while learning from a supportive teacher should not have this stress to place on them and their families. This policy does not meet the social and emotional needs of our students, as some students are choosing to be taught by a teacher over learning through edgenuity. Some of our students would like to help New Hanover County schools move into a better direction during Plan B and C. Student feedback is important to teachers' reflection and should be important to the district in terms of how they proceed forward. If I told you 40% of our students found it extremely difficult to learn through edgenuity, would you reevaluate utilizing edgenuity as the main source of curriculum? If I told you 75% of our students enjoyed learning through a curriculum created facilitated by teachers, would you consider allowing us to do our job? One of our teachers surveyed 50 students after the first two weeks of school. Our students need to be heard, and they have recommendations for New Hanover County schools. Students need to say in how they will learn in Plan B and C. After all, it's their education at risk. In light of the decision that has possibly been made by the district and the board about moving into Plan B, we, New Hanover County Association of Educators, are requesting a meeting with Dr. Faust. We would like to discuss the successes of our students, the needs of our students and teachers, and where we should go to ensure we do not lose any more students and teachers to alternatives during this pandemic. Thank you.
Our next caller is Angie Caney.
My name is Angie Caney, and I come to you as a concerned parent and advocate and supporter of teachers. In July, when the board presented Plan B to the governor for approval, it was clearly explained that under that option, parents would have the choice of remote learning if they felt it was not safe to return to our school buildings. At that time, we had not even applied for the virtual academy as a school district, as that idea was raised at the very same meeting, not to replace remote learning, but as a supplement. At the August meeting, we still did not have definite answers with regard to virtual academy, but maintained that remote learning would still be a viable choice. There are countless emails and posts thereafter, as recent as early last week, that indicate that remote learning would continue to be offered, and explaining the difference between the two. Yet last Thursday, a statement to incite panic was released on the NHCS webpage that this option is being taken off the table without soliciting any feedback from parents, forcing them to choose between unsafe school buildings and a virtual academy that, for the majority, does not work. Many parents want our children taught by their actual teachers, who they already share connection with, and who are unique and strategic in their planning, rather than an edgenuity computer screen. To take that option away at the last minute is unfair and shows little regard for the value of staff and students. I honestly don't think that we have any teachers in this county that lack the skills to rely on a program such as edgenuity, as it lacks diversity, individuality, and creativity, and puts our marginalized communities at an even greater disadvantage. I can't support any option that does not allow flexibility here for students and teachers to opt out of this program. I'd say that those who think we need to work within these confines strongly underestimate the talent that we have in our educators. It makes perfect sense that many are outraged that they have no choice, as they are not comfortable with being forced into these buildings prematurely and support the option to choose a better alternative. I'd ask that you consider not going back on your word to allow flexibility for both families and educators. I've watched our teachers grow and excel over the last several months, to where they have taken a challenging situation and made it into something quite successful. Let's acknowledge that and focus on their strengths. Adding another stressful transition at this point is simply unnecessary and unwarranted. The growth with remote learning has been tremendous. While no one expects perfection, and we certainly still have some issues to resolve, of the three choices, the feedback from parents indicated that this is the most positive. It might be beneficial to simplify and have teachers teach from a similar platform through Seesaw, Google Classroom, and Canvas, so that there is some level of consistency, but to force the rigidity of edgenuity in the virtual academy is stifling, and to take away options that keep our staff and students safe is dangerous. I'd encourage the district to listen to feedback from dedicated teachers and involve families when making decisions that affect us all. Thanks.
And our last caller for the night is Clyde Edgerton.
And I speak for Concerned Parents and Citizens 2020. We have read the news of August 31st, 2020, in the Port City Daily regarding information that the school board has chosen to sit on and not be transparent about. We believe this lack of transparency is purposeful. We believe it is appalling and shameful. We hope the fear that has led to hush-up and cover-up will be reversed with a new superintendent. Thank you.
All right, those are all the individuals that we had sign up for call to the audience. Thank you to everyone that did sign up. We are now on to item number eight, information. Item A, policies for first reading. Ms. Nichols?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To remind our viewers, we are in the process of revising our policy manual, working with the State Board of Education. So tonight, we are presenting 16 policies for first reading. The first policy is 2450, suspending the board policies, and this is going to be a new policy for us. Second policy, 2460, administration and policy absence. And Mrs. Stagner, anytime you want to share in additional information, please do so. The next policy, 2470, administrative procedures. The next policy, 2475, school rules, and this is also a new policy. Policy 25, option A, hearing before the board. We had two options. It's a policy committee to decide which best fit our needs, and we chose option A, hearing before the board, and this is quite involved, and Mrs. Stagner may wish to...
And I'll just note, for this policy, the board had previously revised its policy 2500 that addressed hearings. It's currently in a very short form. This gives much more detail and procedure, and the policy committee reviewed that and determined that this would be the policy that's recommended. So although you do have a current policy 2500, this will completely replace it and provides more detailed procedures.
So will we need to repeal option B?
Well, it's just policy 2500. When it's codified, it will get rid of the option A. So I think that will be taken care of. We'll make sure, I'll check with McKenna Osborn with the School Board Association to make sure that's cleaned up.
Thank you very much. The next policy, policy 2600, consultants to the board. And this apparently is relatively new to us as well. Next policy, 2610, board attorney. And Mrs. Stagner, we've got a lot in here, so you may want to go through this with us.
Well, this policy was based on the School Board Association standard policy, but the red, I think there was a significant addition based on language in your existing policy about board attorney. And then the committee decided that it would be appropriate to have an annual review of legal services, and that's the language at the end of the policy.
Thank you. Next policy, 2650, liaison with school boards associations. And I'm sure you've had a chance to read these before the meeting, and our viewers certainly can have a little bit more time as we go. The next policy is 2660, board appointments to outside committees. Our next policy, 2670, business advisory council, and this is a new one for our manual.
And this is something that's required by statute now for there to be a business advisory council.
The next policies are not going to be in any order, but I think if it's, whomever is working this is doing a great job in keeping up. Thank you very much. I'm taking it in order of the way they were listed, not numerically. Policy code 1750, grievance procedures for employees, and this one is quite involved. So, Mrs. Stagner?
Yes, again, so you do, the board does currently have grievance Yes, again, so you do...the board does currently have a grievance procedure for employees. So this incorporates some of the specificity and language from the existing policy, and then it's also based on the School Board Association standard policy. So this is a very detailed process for employee grievances.
And this is one certainly the board members need to review constantly to ensure that we are following procedures. The next policy, 1740, Student and Parent Grievance Procedure.
And this is one that the board did not have a specific student-parent grievance. There is a more general parent and public complaint procedure. So this one will address, I think, a significant need of the board to have something in place where there are parent and student concerns that don't fit into any other statutory appeal process.
Policy Code 4329, Bullying and Harassing Behavior. The next policy, 1730. And I'll remind you, the additional numbers of policy code will be the ones that you'll find this information again in additional policies. Policy 2230, Board Committees. And the committee spent quite a bit of time reviewing this policy and adding information, but I would encourage each board member, the committee that you are serving on or have served on, that you'll review it very carefully and let us know if you see any changes that Now, if we can scroll to the last part of the information on the policies, we have seven policies that we need to rescind, and there they are for you to look at. There are seven. I don't know that it's necessary for me to read those. What do you think, Mrs. Stagner?
No, there are actually eight, I believe, Ms. Nichols. But these are all policies that have been replaced completely by new policies that the board has already adopted. So every time the board has gone through this process with second reading and adopted new policies, then following up with that, we'll be presenting policies to rescind so that that policy manual can be cleaned up as we go along. I don't...and it could all be done with one motion.
Okay, thank you. So, Madam Chair, we need a motion to rescind the policies that are presented to you on the screen.
Okay, is there a motion? So, Ms. Stagner, are you saying that the motion can be to rescind the following policies altogether?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion to rescind the following eight policies?
Motion to rescind the eight policies.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ravanbark. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Bullier.
Thank you, Mr. Bullier. Any discussion?
Ms. Seestep?
Aye.
Mr. Wardman?
Aye.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Ravanbark?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes seven nothing. Ms. Nichols, was there anything else?
No, we'll just see these again next month for second reading, so be sure you go through them very carefully. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Nichols. All right, item B, Transition from Plan C to Plan B Update. Dr. LaShawn Smith?
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the board, Dr. Faust, welcome, and those present here either at the Board of Education Center or watching from home. On July 7th, 2020, with much debate and consideration, the Board of Education voted to begin the 2020-21 school year in Plan B, based on a recommendation labeled as Option 2 that allowed for all pre-K students to attend face-to-face instruction on an alternating three-week schedule. Students would be assigned to Groups 1, 2, or 3. Siblings would be in that same group. Groups would attend school in an ongoing rotation by attending school in person for one week and then receiving online instruction for two weeks. The district recognized that there were some special education students for whom remote learning provides additional challenges. For those students, services would continue to be provided daily in the school building. Additionally, English learners in Year 2 or less would attend daily instruction as well. Full K-12 virtual school option would be provided for families through the virtual academy, and this was for those families that selected home learning for their students. As the district made plans for the opening for the school year, it became apparent that opening under Plan B was not feasible for the district and was not feasible for the district. And a presentation was made to the board on July 28th, sharing both the progress toward the goal of opening under Plan B as well as the barriers that remained. This evening, the following work groups, Teaching and Learning, Health and Human Services, Operations, Communications, and Finance, would like to provide to the board an additional update on the progress the district has made toward our opening under Plan B no later than at the end of the first grading period. And that was the decision that was made on the night of June 20...July 28th. As I shared in an earlier presentation to the board, our instructional goals for the district have not changed. We remain committed to ensuring every child has access to high-quality curriculum, that teachers have the training, the resources, and the tools to meet the needs of the students which they serve, and to ensure that high-quality instruction occurs for all, as well as to ensure that students are engaged in high-quality learning tasks that require an appropriate level of cognitive demand. But what has changed are our strategies and our tactics. Administrators and teachers have had to pivot, moving from having daily access to students in the face-to-face environment to now connecting in the remote learning world. Overwhelmingly, the feedback that I have received has been positive. Our teachers and administrators have, in many instances, exceeded expectations for the design and delivery of instruction in our new remote learning environment. Specifically, we have made progress in designing online options for students. Once we moved to Plan B, that would allow for families to continue to have access both to remote learning and the virtual academy. Parents who need the flexibility afforded by the virtual academy would be able to take advantage of that option for their children, while others who have a preference for a more synchronous...excuse me, more asynchronous instruction would be able to continue...excuse me, more synchronous instruction, I apologize, would be able to continue with remote learning. This, however, may not be with their child's teacher as we work to navigate the challenges of scheduling, taking into consideration the needs of families and of our staff, but it would be with a teacher at their child's school. At this time, I'd like to now turn it over to Ms. Brinson to provide additional information about our progress and our current barriers.
As of today, New Hanover County Schools has checked out 10,720 iPads and laptops to students. Schools will continue to check out devices to students as the requests come in. 556 webcams and 160 laptops with cameras have also been checked out to teachers for video conferencing. There are requests for additional cameras, and an order for laptops with cameras for teachers is expected to arrive this week. New Hanover County Schools has partnered with the county government and Live Oak Bank to provide more public Wi-Fi access. There are 26 locations around the county where families can drive up to gain internet access. These locations are on our website. Also, Live Oak Bank is working with childcare providers to increase their internet speed so that they are better able to support our students in this remote environment. One barrier that we still have is the distribution of our hotspots. I am happy to say that today we did deliver to 26 schools the hotspots that they have told us that they needed. Unfortunately, it took time to work through the contract and paperwork with AT&amp;T, but we did begin delivering. We are hoping that we will continue delivering at the remainder of schools tomorrow.
And at this time, we'd welcome any questions in regards to teaching and learning.
So basically, what you're saying is that, just to summarize, we're giving the option of remote learning to parents if they so choose, but it will not be with the teacher that...it will probably not be with the teacher that they will have now. Is that correct?
It's very difficult to say, just simply because of all the logistics associated, specifically with human resources. So if the teachers are...if the schools and the teachers and the principals are able to schedule that, then that is the preferred option, but if not, we at the very least want to be able to provide them with that continued remote learning. And as we heard from the callers, our teachers and administrators have exceeded expectations. So we have designed remote learning in a way that families want that to continue, and we have...we are working...we've heard them, and we're working to make sure that that can happen. But we've also heard from other families who have said that they want the flexibility that the virtual academy provides, and so we want to make sure that option is available to them as well. And also, we've heard from families who want the option of face-to-face. So what we're designing for provides the option of face-to-face, continued all remote as well as virtual academy.
I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
LaShawn?
Yes, sir.
I want to thank you and Dawn and Julie for what you have done. It's incredible for doing it, you know, just on a dime, turning around and making this happen. But, you know, when we first started, nobody wanted to go to Plan C, nobody. And now, nobody wants to go to Plan B, except for the two parents that work to pay their mortgage and their car payments and their kids' insurance and who's home teaching them. The kids with one parent that works that's not home with them, kids with IEPs, parents with three kids with one computer that go to Ashley, Murray, and Anderson. How do you do that and work? And a lot of these kids, at some of the schools, the most love they get a lot is at school. And these young kids need to get back to school, and I know that's not going to be real popular, and I'll probably get 1,000 emails tomorrow. I don't care. What's best for the kids is what we need to do, and that's what we need to do. And that's all I got to say.
Can I piggyback off of that? We need the public to understand how important it is to social distance, wear masks, wash their hands. That's the only way we're going to get through this safely so we can get back to normal, and that's what's so frustrating. Please, absolutely. And also, I would like to compliment our district. I love what's going on in my house with my grandkids. They're lucky because I am home and so is their mother during the day. On the other hand, I was in Wake County this weekend, who are also all virtual, and they weren't so happy. So, for a change, I would like to say that in my family, New Hanover County Schools are the rave, and Wake County is not a good place to be a student. Okay?
But we are.
We are. Yeah, they're doing it differently. They got them up...well, there's different things. I said, "We're happier here than they are there." And it's not the parents, it's just the format.
I would just like to echo also, I know the amount of work that's gone into the juggling that you've had to do, and you have a lot of voices coming at you with needs, and I think you're doing an amazing job of working with all of our families, and I know that's not easy. So, thank you, all of you.
And of course, I'd like to...
I wanted to ask Ms. Brinson about the hotspots. You indicated they're being delivered to the schools. Then what responsibility...how would the schools get them out to the students?
The schools are the ones who know exactly which students need them. They're the ones who collected the names, so they will communicate with the families that they have the hotspots, so then the parents can come to the schools, arrange to be able to sign for them and pick them up.
So if the parents don't have a way, we're still working very closely with each student to ensure that they have connection. Is that correct?
Yes, we are working through it. Each school individually are using their staff that they are able to and to make sure that the needs of every student are met.
That's a tremendous undertaking. Very proud. Thank you.
Dr. Stagner, can I ask a question real quick? I was going to wait till we were done, but...
Yes, sir.
We approved this five weeks ago. We approved this five weeks ago, to shut down our schools and go to remote learning, five weeks ago. At that time, obviously, it was a six-to-one vote. But a couple of the board members voted to shut down our schools with the caveat that we would open up as soon as possible. So we're now five weeks into planning to open up. We're two weeks into school. And seven more weeks into the nine weeks that we decided to shut down for, or shut down our buildings for. Are we closer to opening up in nine weeks? Because I think that's what most people want to know. We hear from a lot of people that don't go back to school, don't want to go back to school. And we're coming up with options for them, whether it be virtual school or remote learning, which is great. There are a lot of people out there that actually want to go back to school. So where are we and what's your estimated time? Are you still estimating nine weeks? Or do you think that we're going to be able to get back to school sooner? Or do you think we're going to actually postpone it till later?
So, the subgroup that Ms. Brinson and I had is the one specific to teaching and learning. So I can definitely speak to where we are. And on the screen, you can see the progress that we've made and the remaining barriers. And as Ms. Brinson said, the hotspots today, we made major movement forward in terms of addressing that need. And then with the remaining barriers, scheduling, we've got a principal's meeting scheduled next week with our folks from HR that we believe will give principals some very valuable information about how to formalize schedules for, for, for their teachers and within their schools. And this is in, in, in effort to plan for, Plan B. And so what I would say is that we have made tremendous progress specific to teaching and learning. In terms of a timeline, I will leave that decision to the board. But the work that the folks as a part of our, our work group and our principals and our teachers and our administrators just in general have done, I think, have really moved us forward toward either meeting or exceeding the deadline that the board initially set.
Well, and I appreciate that, Dr. Smith. We based our decision based on your recommendations five weeks ago, to shut down. So are, are you unable to give a recommendation or a guess as to when we may be able to open back up early?
So I can speak specifically to teaching and learning. I'll let Mr. Anderson speak to the operations side of the House and then also Ms. Varnum to the, to the health and, and safety, the health and human service, services side of the House in, in regards to that. I think we are at different places because the work looks very different in terms of moving through what's required to get us to Plan B. But speaking specifically toward teaching and learning, I feel really good about where we are and very comfortable that we will, again, either meet or exceed the board's expectation of being prepared and ready to open by the date that the board decided at the, the last meeting, I, I think on February, excuse me, July 28th, when the decision was made.
I would just like, I would just, David, excuse me, I would just like to say, if we don't do anything else, we have got to get K-5 open back up because between Hurricanflance and this, these kids are missing a year of school. We have got to get these kids back in school. They've got to get started.
Well, and Bill-
And I don't, I don't know exactly how that's going to happen, but we gotta figure it out.
And Bill, I agree with what you're saying, but I, but I also say, I, I would also say that we can't tell the kids to go back to school. We need to give them the option.
Absolutely.
And that, and that's what, that's the biggest thing that I'm saying. I'm not saying it makes kids go back to school. We, we've come up with some good options. But what I'm hearing is, is, and I appreciate your answer, LaShawn, and I appreciate the work that y'all have done, but you're not really giving an answer other than that you're going to meet the, the nine-week date that we talked about. And again, I just want to make sure that everyone knows, you know, I mean, this is important for a lot of people to get their kids back into school. I think you can, you know, and I think Columbus County is now, I think as of Monday, they're allowing K-5 back into school. I know Brunswick shut down for four and a half weeks. They're going to reevaluate after four and a half weeks. And, and it's my hope that we can get our kids back to school or at least give our parents the choice to go back to school as quickly as possible. Hopefully, shorter than that nine weeks that we decided to shut the schools down for.
LaShawn, correct me if I'm wrong, the first semester, the first nine, it's first eight weeks, correct? We have eight weeks?
It actually is seven. It varies actually a little differently because we have so many different calendars. So what we're using and referring to really is the first grading period. So that will be as early as September 25th for our restart schools and our, and I believe our year-round as well, and as late as October 7th for a traditional calendar.
All right, thank you.
Yes, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Dr. Smith and Ms. Brinson. Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Faust. On behalf of the Health Work Group, I would like to share updates on progress and barriers. And I, I want to offer a reminder that the goal of the Health Work Group is to support overall health and well-being of children, adolescents, families, and the community. In addition, I would like to remind that the essential questions that the Health Work Group began focusing on from the very start were four essential questions. How will staffing needs and impact be identified and addressed? How will vulnerable students and staff be supported? When, how, and by whom will screening occur? And then how will students and staff that exhibit symptoms at screening or during the day be supported and by whom? And so I'd like to draw your attention to the progress and remaining barriers on the screen. First, I'd like to identify that the progress is really toward control of the school environment with regard to health concerns during this pandemic. And that would be the progress in addition to those identified at the last update last month. So really important pieces to note are screening and mask protocols by school and level. So level of school, elementary versus middle versus high school. And as a part of the Health and Human Services Work Group, we really focused on rolling out screening, and we talked about that at our last presentation. But I can, I'm, I'm happy to share with you that all of our facilities are operating screening for every staff that enters. And to my knowledge, we are the largest entity in the county doing that, doing that consistently, daily, for every staff member coming in and, and visitors as well. So we're, we're practicing through that piece, becoming more fluent, competent, and confident in that process, which is extremely important. The other with mask protocols, of course, right now, we're focusing on the mask protocols for staff and then for any children, school-aged children of our staff who are attending our remote learning labs. So again, that's a little bit of an experiment for us to really figure out where protocols need to go, one way or the other. And then the protocols by level have really been created by the administrators, the elementary principal, the middle school principal, and the high school assistant principal, and also athletic director, who are on the Health Work Group, really focusing on mask protocols for their own levels, for elementary, for middle, and high school, thinking about how students interact with their school environment, how they interact through the times where they're not wearing masks, such as eating, strenuous activity. And then, of course, we've had to move into the realm of potentially exceptions to using a cloth face mask. That one is going to go to the barrier side, however. So we also have addressed instructional preparations, especially around social-emotional learning. We know that we are going to have to respond to, and we are already responding to in a virtual and remote way, the needs of our students and their social and emotional needs that have been, have been exacerbated by the gap in having a structured instructional environment. Also, a progress that I would like to focus on would be the student-specific supports. We are able to continue with school-based mental health supports along with virtual and remote learning. We are also able to provide personalized services, interventions, and, and that can include, but isn't completely limited to, deliveries of necessary equipment, deliveries of different types of work product or tasks, whether it's paper pencil, whether it's device support, or whether it's certain materials like assistive technology for students with special needs. The staff-specific supports has focused really around, number one, the remote learning labs for our staff so that they can bring their children, who are school-aged and working in remote learning, with them to work. Again, just so the public understands this, this is not an instructional support for the children of staff. This is a supervised environment so that our staff can come to school and work and support the children who are learning through virtual and remote means. The other is really supporting our staff with accommodations that they need based on any medical concerns or other health and safety concerns related to their work during this, this time. And then I would like to focus on professional development that's been, been provided to staff to increase their confidence and the common language around supporting mental health needs of our students. We know that back in January, in a board meeting, you determined, based on a lot of information provided, that included the Resiliency Task Force and the Safer Schools Task Force. In fact, Judge Corpenning was here to speak about it in January, that we knew that school-based mental health supports, including mental health first aid training for our staff, was essential. And I am really excited to stand here and tell you that since we have moved into this new school year, we've had more than 500 teachers trained on Sanford Harmony, which is based on the five social-emotional competencies through the Castle Network, which is, if you, if you haven't heard about that, I'd love to share more about that sometime, but I'll get, I'll get right down into my nerd-dom if I do that. But this is really exciting because our teachers are equipped with the language around pro-social mental health development. We also, as a, as an area of progress, have focused on community partnerships. And two community partnerships that I have been working with over the last few weeks are led by physicians in our community. And they are, they are seeking to provide additional materials and supports on top of what's been provided by the governor's office or by the, the Division of Health and Human Services, such as additional masks, such as teacher care kits with additional hand sanitizer and maybe a special handmade mask for their face covering for them. But then also, you know, a, a community group coming together for hashtag PPE4NHCS to provide screens, the three-sided face shields or screens for students and staff. And so you might be hearing some about that, maybe on the radio in the mornings. But knowing that we have community support, really trying to reach out and, number one, celebrate that we're continuing on with instruction and really preparing for that face-to-face instruction that, that we hope is coming. The remaining barriers that, of course, I need to focus on are the staffing and staff safety concerns. We see in emails and communications, we hear from our fellow teachers, our fellow staff, our fellow educators, that, you know, there are requests and communications of health and safety concerns with return. That can't be eliminated by talking our way through that. That's a legitimate concern. It's a concern for many families. It's a concern for many of our educators. And of course, we've got to find out more information from them. We need to continue to survey and understand where they are and what they need for us to be able to support them in moving through the instructional models that we have ahead of us. Another remaining barrier would be competing guidance and updates. We can all pay attention to the news and listen to CDC updates, but realizing that until the language changes in the North Carolina Public Health Toolkit, we're still following the toolkit. And of course, that creates angst and discomfort and anxiety among our educators and our families. And so, you know, one thing that we experienced right here in our district was discrepancy in contact tracing and how the contagious disease side of public health was seeing the contact tracing and the need for isolation versus how, you know, our school nurses and the other side of public health were really seeing it. And it's, and it's based on competing guidance. And the bottom line is, nobody, there is no ill will in this. The bottom line is, this is a very changing virus or we're changing as we learn more about how it operates. So some of those things are just inherent in, in this health pandemic. Also, in competing guidance and updates, we are faced with a really unique situation. And I'm standing here as a lifelong special educator, really unique situation where the individual rights, even of a person with a disabling condition, don't necessarily outweigh the environmental rights. In a public health time, in a, in a time of a pandemic, we have to really understand that the primary goal, and this is, comes from, from Department of Public Instruction language, the primary goal of schools during a pandemic is to maintain safe public health conditions while providing educational services, of course. But keeping all students in, safe in school buildings takes precedence over whether an individual student in public education is provided in-person or remote learning. And that's just a different dynamic when it comes to the rights of a student with a disability. Generally, we have sufficient control over our environment that we can, we can make those decisions. This is something that's really outside of our control and we have to pay very close attention to the public health information that comes into us. The other remaining barrier that I want to focus on for a moment would be managing those exceptions for staff and students. So kind of in light of what I've shared about individual rights versus public health rights, what if our staff are asking for exceptions, such as, because of my health conditions and because of what the CDC lays out as potentially conditions that make this virus potentially more harmful to me, I can't be in this environment with face-to-face with the number of people that will be here and without an absolute ability to maintain the physical distancing that I'm going to need. How do we respond to those? If, if somebody says, "I've got respiratory concerns and I cannot wear a cloth face mask," is a shield going to be enough support and enough protection for those in that person's setting, in the same setting with that person? What about a student who, who cannot wear a cloth face mask for reasons based on a disabling condition? And they can't remove it themselves? We have students with special needs that would not be able to wear a cloth face mask because they cannot remove it themselves, either due to intellectual or physical disabilities. So, you know, in, and I just have to thank Deborah Stagner and her team, Carolyn Murchison and the others with Tharrington Smith for really providing us with a lot of information, but really helpful information on mask exceptions and what we might have to do with that as a result. We have to figure out if, if that, if, if having a mask or a cloth face covering exception means that a student or that staff member doesn't participate on campus because of the public health hazard, potentially. And then, when we're looking at remote requests, just as Dr. Smith was sharing in the teaching and learning and has been shared by public comment, when the remote learning has, has, versus the virtual academy, has really turned out to be very supportive and folks don't want to change that, they want to continue to participate in that, how do we manage that through attendance coding and not count students absent for not, not coming on a week during Plan B? The other thing that we know we have to be focused on beyond flexible face-to-face weeks by student need is whether our students with disabilities, upon returning into Plan B or, or moving into Plan B, are offered full face-to-face services or having those, those offered and available to them not required, but again, a family choice based on the needs of that family and the needs of that student. I would encourage us to serve as many students with disabilities full-time, simply because many of our students with disabilities have not been able to access remote or virtual instruction at all, and some minimally. And every student with a disability that has specially-designed instruction has been identified by a multidisciplinary team to have strengths and needs so discrepant from their typical peers that they require specially-designed, individualized instruction. And I would encourage that we consider that to be face-to-face on a more daily option than what Plan B had provided. I know that was a lot of information- I know that was a lot of information, and Mr. Anderson, I tried to go quickly. Is, are there any questions based on the information that I've provided?
Any questions for board members?
But thank you, Dr. Varan. That was a lot of information.
Just a quick question. The Sanford Harmony, you said that 500 teachers have been trained. That's fantastic since the beginning of the year. Are they across the district or certain schools?
Yes, they're across the district. That is a district-wide social-emotional component to our instruction that is going to be used in all elementary. We also have a district-wide middle school and high school support option. Part of that is combined with some Title IX supports and educational programs, but those professional development opportunities haven't been finalized. But that is across the district, thank you. And I'm sorry, Ms. Justice, I didn't hear what you said.
I said, "Thank you." That was a lot of information. And also, is it the elementary school teachers and/or staff that have been mainly trained? You said it sounded like the middle and high school haven't yet been implemented?
Right. So the middle and high school educational programs have been chosen, and the training hasn't been secured because honestly, we're using federal funds, and this gets into a little bit of a nitpicky thing. I say nitpicky, it's a financial rule, but I abide by those because I am really, really afraid of, no, I'm not afraid of Mary Hazel. No, I abide by the financial rules. We are using federal funds for the Second Step programming, and one requirement of federal funds is that we, if it's not a sole source, then we have to bid these out and do a request for proposals. And so we're working through that process, but knowing that we are planning the use of evidence-based programming and we believe that Second Step is rather sole source, so we're working through that part with DPI. I know that was more than you wanted to know.
Oh, no, I liked all of that information.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Varan, I don't know if this would be a question for you or for Mr. Anderson, but have we come up with a protocol for students who are exhibiting symptoms?
Yes, yes, we have. So, and we actually trained our administrators back in July. It definitely was not August, it was prior to August. Everything runs together. But we have a very specific protocol for, well, it's a set of protocols. In fact, it's a 24-page packet of protocols on what to do for students or staff if they are exhibiting symptoms or identify a close contact or exposure or have been diagnosed, and they share that at the beginning of the day, and whether students share that at a time that a parent is still with them or if they arrived at school kind of, you know, walking or on a bike kind of thing. And so we have protocols for those different scenarios. And then also, if they begin to show symptoms throughout the day or they are alerted of a contact through contact tracing throughout the school day, how we would handle those for a staff member than for a student where we have the parent available and for a student where we don't have the parent available.
One of the small concerns I have, one of the large concerns, but the, you know, I know when people develop this virus, even when they recover from it, there's a real stigma associated with having had COVID. And I just want to make sure that, to the best of our ability, we are protecting the privacy of these students because eventually they will be back in our system and, you know, it could be very problematic.
Absolutely. And we did talk about that when we did that training. We also had our schools create their transition planning from C to B. And part of what they have already provided to senior staff, and each school has their own plan, from the health aspect, was the screening. But then, really, how will we manage the screening for students? And one part of that was maintaining confidentiality during the screening process so that if somebody says, "Well, yeah, I have, I do know somebody that has tested positive and I am having symptoms," we don't want other kids to hear that. And so the screening process, while, again, this is kind of a barrier, but we've really been building these supports and the schools have done a phenomenal job with this, really trying to lay out the student screening process so that you don't have long lines of screening and you don't have students congregating, but you've got a confidential, private screening option that happens quickly but still with fidelity so that you're not just saying, "Okay, have you, no, 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 okay, good, go." No, you're like, "Have you been exposed? Do you have symptoms?" You know, that kind of thing. And making sure that other students aren't hearing it because it could definitely be a situation that would contribute to potentially bullying and harassment, and folks have experienced that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Julie, y'all are doing a great job.
She did such a, she did such a great job. I thought she was going to do my presentation.
As opposed to any answer.
I wouldn't.
No, no, they're all great.
I wouldn't be opposed. Good evening. At the last board meeting, I talked about how implementing Plan B was a lot like putting together a jigsaw puzzle with missing pieces. And, well, tonight, I'm pleased to tell you that I think we've found all the pieces and we've made tremendous progress. Some nights, some people come in and they mess them all up or turn them over, but they're all there and we're working together. And like I said, we're making tremendous progress. And tonight, I'd really like to just focus quickly on three areas. The first area is telenutrition services. Food safety, sanitation procedures are currently in place. We're operating meal service in 44 sites. Meal planning, menus, pre-ordering procedures are being finalized for Plan B. When we transition to Plan B, all students will eat in their classrooms for the first group rotation. So for the first three weeks, we really want all students eating in the classroom. And that will give us during that time a better idea of how we can expand that. That's our goal. We know students don't want to be in the classroom all day. And we'll be evaluating additional options and we'll expand those options to include the cafeteria, other spaces within the building, and possibly eating outside. We've expanded our meal program from serving at non-schools to serving meals at 44 schools. This was done in an effort to reach more families since the federal waiver allowing us to deliver meals to neighborhoods was set to expire August 31st. And talking about coming in and messing up your puzzle overnight, the USDA, just yesterday, the day it was set to expire, they, and we're very happy about this because they did extend waivers for summer food service program and non-congregate feeding through December 31st of this year. So that's a great thing. This allows us to continue to feed all children 18 years of age or younger for free. It allows us to count the number of meals served and not require student names, power school numbers, or authorization forms from parents. It also allows us to expand our meal program. Right now, we are establishing bus routes. We're looking at going back to essentially our meal program, something very similar to April, May, and adding bus routes and bus stops within neighborhoods. Our goal is to have that established this week with the short week next week. We want to communicate that to the parents, make sure that everyone understands where we'll be and what time we'll be there. And then we're going to begin that delivery on Monday, September 14th, if not sooner. When we transition to Plan B, we will, of course, be serving all children that are in face-to-face learning, but we'll also be operating curbside grab-and-go meal service for those students on remote learning. And in looking at barriers, I think that's a barrier. It's, we do not have enough buses, drivers, and time to continue neighborhood meal distributions under Plan B along with our normal transportation services if we've got even a third of the students in school. How many of those stops and how many buses we could utilize? We're going to be looking at that. We're going to be looking or evaluating the participation rates under Plan C and make some final determinations as to which stops may be able to continue. But curbside grab-and-go meals will continue under Plan B and they'll continue at all 45 sites. Additionally, we really need flexibility in our state transportation funds. Right now, we're using local funds. The flexibility was granted to us back in March or April, but so far, that has not been extended. Speaking of transportation, right now, schools are identifying transportation needs in student groups, and they're putting that information into Power School so that we can begin to establish our bus routes. That's probably the biggest barrier right now as to being ready to roll buses tomorrow or next week. We need that information in Power School and then establishing all those routes and communicating that information to our parents is not done overnight. That will take a couple of weeks. Parent guardian attestation form is complete. It's available on the website. We've been talking about that a lot, communicating that to parents, that that will be required before they're able to use bus transportation, but it only needs to be submitted once. And that attestation form says that they will do that screening at home before they allow their student to come on the bus. Consequently, we will not be doing any screening at the bus stop. They'll be allowed to come on the bus and we'll follow the guidelines for social distancing, which allows one student per seat, so a total of 24 students on a 72-passenger bus. But there are exceptions for siblings and family members that can sit together. So a face mask will be required for all students riding the bus. Additional equipment and supplies have been ordered for cleaning and disinfecting buses. High-traffic, high-touch areas will be cleaned in between each run, and then the bus will be thoroughly cleaned and disinfected twice a day, once after the morning runs, once after the afternoon runs. These new procedures, the drivers have been trained in all of these and are, we're ready to implement. I have this under barriers, community stops, shorter runs, doubling up runs, and face masks. I put it under barriers, but I really think there are more challenges or possibly even opportunities, and I'll tell you what I mean. COVID-19 has really caused us to rethink transportation. And we're using this as an opportunity to make some all-around improvements. Last year, the bus driver shortage affected our substitute driver pool more than any other group. We had an average of 9% absentee rate each day, and there were no substitute drivers to fill those positions. And we all know that that resulted in late, delayed routes and late arrival times at our schools. So in looking at our planning for this year, we're going to have fewer stops, fewer community stops in lieu of individual mailbox stops. So if we go into a neighborhood in lieu of six or eight stops, we may have three or four more centrally located. We will have shorter runs and we will plan for some double runs. This is primarily due to the reduced bus capacity. However, it does give us the opportunity to reduce the overall number of routes and drivers that are needed, and we are going to create a substitute driver pool. So if we have anywhere from 80, 85, 90% of our drivers driving the assigned routes each and every day, we'll take that 10% to 15% as a substitute pool and fill that 9% absenteeism each day. We'll have drivers for normal absences, we'll have drivers for emergencies. This will result in far fewer, less buses, but perhaps even more importantly, with supervisors and coordinators in the office not driving buses, this will also improve our communication with parents and communication with the schools. A lot of times, if there was an event that was causing a delay, it wasn't so much the delay that caused the concern, it was the lack of communication that there was a delay and why there was a delay. So with our supervisors and coordinators in the office, I think we'll do a much better job communicating with parents, communicating with schools. And I will say that Mr. Clausen has worked diligently and figured out a way, I don't understand it, but he's figured out a way to have Parent Portal work with each of the three groups. So, good for him. Another great asset for parents. We do not believe that the double runs will change stop times significantly. We think that, you know, within five or 10 minutes of what they were last year at the very most, because it's, we will have significantly shorter runs, and those runs that we're going to double up on, we'll strategically pick which runs. We'll do an outer ring first, come in and do a much shorter ring second, or we may double up on two of the shorter rings. But we will strategically pick those. So I am really looking forward to implementing this plan. I think it's a good response to the challenges of COVID-19, but I compliment the transportation team in also looking beyond that and addressing some challenges for last year. Lastly, facilities. I will say that schools are doing a fantastic job in preparing their facilities for social distancing requirements for Plan B. Sinage, floor markings, hand sanitizer stations, Plexiglas sneeze guards, and many other safety measures have been installed. Training has been completed on new procedures for cleaning and disinfecting. Additional equipment has been purchased, supplies have been distributed to the schools. All procedures are in accordance with the CDC guidelines, and all of the products that we're using in our schools are on the EPA-approved list for COVID-19. Our facilities are also being prepared in ways you may not see, in ways you may not think about. Our maintenance department took advantage of the time over the summer and performed a lot of preventive maintenance and tune-up of HVAC equipment. We're using the maximum filtration we can or that's permitted with the systems that we operate. We have increased the frequency of our filter changes in our systems, and we're running our systems differently. Each school and each HVAC system has different limitations, and we are looking at them individually to increase the outdoor air that's being provided into the building. We want to increase that to the maximum that's available without presenting some other problems, especially this time of year with humidity. We're also running our systems at different times, and this, again, is just to allow overall improved indoor air quality and perhaps more importantly, a more frequent changeover of the air within our buildings. So even though you don't see it, those things are happening, are going on. And the, I'd say the biggest barrier to our facilities and our maintenance and custodial at this point is we do not have a custodial substitute pool. We're able to cover all the positions each day. Absenteeism is not really a problem, but under Plan B, if we had a situation where there was a COVID outbreak, we don't have that substitute pool that could be brought to that school and fill in for a large number of people. We've had situations over the summer where we had to pull from other schools. We were able to do that because we didn't have students in the building. But I think even with a third of the students in the building, again, that's a challenge. I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a barrier, it's just a challenge that we need to recognize and deal with. Do you, anyone have any questions for me with operations?
I just wanted to follow up. You mentioned that there's some installations. I wanted to see where we are with the RO filters that were going into the RO water fountains that were going to the schools. Have they all been delivered and installed?
They are in the process of being installed. They'll be installed within, all of them should be installed within the next two weeks. They'll be installed within, all of them should be installed within the next two weeks. Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to say one thing about that before we get to the next thing. I don't think there's anything that we can do to prevent someone from getting sick. And I don't know what to do about that, but at some point in time, we've got to get the kids back in school. I don't think the little kids are, you know, they may have COVID-19, but they're not having a problem with it. The problem is with the, the people they come in contact with, like the older teachers or people in lunchroom or maintenance people or whatever, or if they are going home to someone like a grandparent that has an underlying medical condition. So I think we need to leave, what we were talking about, leaving it open for people being able to stay virtual, but the people that want to come back to school, they need to get back in school. I know that didn't sound very nice, but it's just what I was thinking. Sorry.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Gibson.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide a communications update as we move toward the transition to Plan B. Since our last presentation, as you can hear, there's been a lot of change and update to the information available on our protocols and procedures under Plan B and we've made significant progress in sharing that information through our website, our social media posts, Facebook Live sessions, videos and FAQs. We've also moved through the survey process that was just starting to be underway when we last presented. Schools have been reaching out to families about their decisions regarding transportation, meal service, in-person instruction and access to technology and remote learning and with many schools successfully connecting with all of their families or the majority of their families and that effort is still underway to reach every family. Communication challenges that still remain are significantly reduced at this time, but we do have, as other team members have mentioned, continuation of changes to federal and state guidelines such as the conflicting information about the face covering protocols and yesterday's change to the meal service requirements and often the information that is updated conflicts with information that we've been publicizing. So we're aware that that can create confusion for families. We're trying to address this by communicating these changes as quickly as possible and when they happen, we try to clarify why the change is being made and be very specific and offer resources for questions. Additionally, while many of the details of Plan B are being addressed and communicated to the community, the information and processes under Plan B are new and untested in many instances. And so we're continuing to increase our communications through this month leading up to our move to Plan B to address concerns specifically related to health and safety when students return to school buildings and the logistics of the in-person and remote learning schedule. We are going to be increasing our FAQs that are available specifically related to the transition to Plan B. We're increasing our video library with a series on health protocols and a series on what students and families can expect when they come to buildings, walking them through that process. In addition, we're going to be working with school websites to create consistency across all of the schools in the school-specific information that they will be providing in terms of signage and traffic patterns and all of that information that's school-site specific and may vary from building to building. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
I do have one question. When we first voted for this back in July, the survey that I think you referenced had just been coming out and we'd only had half of the students, I think that that's about accurate, sorry, half of the parents respond. Do we have the final results of all that survey, of those surveys?
That's the school-based survey, the second survey that we sent, that is the one that many schools have reached all of their families at this point. We just took that link down. I checked with principals and they were feeling that there's only one school that still wanted the link to remain live on the website so that they could refer parents to it. At this point, it's a calling one-to-one with individual families to have them complete the survey. So we're down to very small numbers that haven't completed the survey at this point.
Are the results of the survey consistent with the results that we were presented back in July or did the statistics significantly change in one way or the other?
I have not seen the tabulation currently and we can get that information for you. They're being compiled at the schools, but we can get that to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gibson.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm here once again to give you a brief update of where we are with funding related to our COVID response. We've received a couple more small grants since the last time we met, so the total of state and federal funding at this point is 9.7 million since we started in March. Most of that has to, most of the money that flows through the state has to be spent by December, but the federal funds that were just over 6 million will have this year and next. We are also anticipating a little bit more money for, in the health services area and supplemental instructional service area, so we hope in the next couple of weeks to get a little bit more. On the downside, we have anticipated state funding reduction due to enrollment decrease. So considering everything that's been going on, we are pleased that our enrollment has only decreased 3.5%, but that's still substantial. It's almost 1,000 students and it's mostly K3, 75% of that's K3 and so we're still monitoring the numbers every day and, you know, and they're, they stabilized a little bit. So I think that's kind of what we're planning for now and just to sort of explain to you the way the funding works, the state will look at the best one of the first two months and then they'll reduce us by half of any differential between our actual and projection. And so we won't have the full hit this year, you know, that would come next year when hopefully all those kids are back and so that'll be, it'll really be a bigger deal for next year. But we are hoping there is some discussion in Raleigh about how serious this issue is and hopefully they could hold us harmless to last year, but as of the current law, that's what we have to plan for. So a little bit later in the meeting, I will be requesting your approval for a fund balance appropriation to help us address the state positions that we think that we'll lose that we haven't filled yet. So we have, we held some back and, you know, we weren't, we never go quite as high as the state projection, so we are requesting funding for additional teachers and, you know, a reserve just in case, you know, we lose some instructional support positions, that kind of thing. The areas impacted by the adjustment will be classroom teachers, instructional support, non-instructural support, which is custodians, a lot of those are locally funded as well, teacher assistants, supplies, textbooks and CTE program support. So as I said, we will hopefully, you know, by rearranging staff we have whenever we have a vacancy, we hope to be able with this local appropriation to just hold steady for now without having to do any kind of reduction and just, we're very hopeful that our numbers will not decrease anymore. So that's, that's kind of an update on funding and we have, as was really discussed in some of the other reports, we have been using staff very flexibly and in some cases, we are having to do that with local funding, so I may be bringing you transfers in future meetings once we see how all that, you know, it's, some weeks, staff are in one job and the next week, we might need them somewhere else. So we are, we're having to rearrange staff, but the main thing that we have asked for that we're hoping to get is flexibility for the transportation funding and that will help us quite a bit. If we don't get it, what we'll do is we'll transfer that money to non-instructural support and we'll use it there. So we won't lose it, it's just, it would be better spent for us if we could keep it in the transportation area, so we'll continue to monitor that and give you a report next time. So, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Hazel.
Okay, those are all the updates that we have. Are there any further questions from the board? Hearing none, I've been asked to take a five-minute break from those here in the board center, so we will, it is 8:22, we will endeavor to be back here at 8:27. Thank you.